I am Fenobia Dallas, the Chair of the City of Saginaw Planning Commission. This is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. Public comments are permitted during the designated time on the agenda. This allows the public to speak to concerns about issues, speak to the, excuse me, the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the Secretary for the record. Speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general or specific questions, and those questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Each speaker is limited to three minutes and may only speak once. Speakers should limit their remarks to business within the jurisdiction of the Commission. The public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not to speak on other topics. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please be prepared to speak. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the staff member for the record. The applicant whose application is the subject of the public hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. After the appellate's presentation, others may comment. Again, both speakers shall address their remarks to the Commission as a whole and not to individual Commission members, city staff, or the audience. Each additional speaker commenting on the subject of the public hearing will be limited to three minutes. Speakers may only speak once on that public hearing. This meeting is videotaped, so it is important that only one person speak at a time, and the audience observe respect for the speaker. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions, special land uses, or site plans made by the Planning Commission are then forwarded to City Council for disposition. Are there any questions? Saying none. Staff Zimmerman, will you call the roll, please?
Um, Commissioner Brayley, Commissioner Zwarko, Commissioner Dallas.
Present.
Commissioner Hanley.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
Commissioner Nightingale.
Commissioner Ostash.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from December 21, 2021. Is there a motion?
Shall move, Moore. Support Nash.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from December 21, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The minutes from December 21, 2021 have been approved. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support Moore.
Thank you. It has been, um, approved, uh, the approval of agenda has been approved. I'm here. I'm doing 14 things. It has been moved to approve the agenda and seconded.
Done.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I just want to make, oh, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make one comment, which you all are looking at your printed version. It's slightly different than the emailed version, so that's what we're approving.
I need to get the new version.
If you've got the version in your packet, that is the correct version.
Yes.
Then I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The agenda is approved as is printed. Uh, the next item on our agenda, again, is public comment. This is not the public hearing. This is public comments. The public comment, uh, this is the time for, uh, comments from the public to speak to the Planning Commission about issues of general concern in the community. Once you are recognized, please give your name and address to the Secretary for the record. You may have three minutes to speak on a topic of general concern in front of this Commission, and please confine your remarks to business within the jurisdiction of this Commission. Does anyone here want to make a public comment? Is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment? Anyone here wishing to make a public comment to the Commission in general? Was that a hand?
Does that?
The public comment is not the public hearing. Okay, sorry. Anyone here who would like to have the time to speak to the Commission about issues of general concern from the community? Saying none, we will move to the next item on our agenda. We will now open the public hearings on the items listed on the agenda. Remember, the public hearing is to address the Commission with regard to the subject of the relevant hearing and not to speak on other topics. When the petition, special land use, or site plan approval request in which you are interested is called, please be prepared to speak. Once you are recognized, give your name and address to the staff member for the record. The applicant whose application is the subject of the public hearing or their designated representative shall be the main presenter and will be allowed 10 minutes for their presentation. After their presentation, others may comment. Again, direct your remarks to the Commission as a whole. You have 10 minutes to speak on, uh, to provide your, again, your presentation, and anyone commenting on your, uh, excuse me, on the subject of the public hearing will be limited to three minutes. The first item on our new business is public hearing, case J-21-0112, special use permit for marijuana grower, uh, processor establishment at 1400 Atwater. Is the applicant or representative present? Please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Uh, hi, my name is Jeff Pelteer, I'm an architect. I live in Owasso, Michigan. 1888, uh, Catagon Road. Basically, I think the idea here is that we're going to take the old, um, self-cirched lumber building and convert it into a, a much newer and improved facility. The, uh, biggest concern, of course, is the deteriorating site conditions, so all that will be removed and replaced with some nice green lawn, and, of course, the stormwater issues that are, uh, currently sheet-flying into the, the street will be taken underground so that, uh, that can be a benefit to the stormwater system as a whole. Uh, the building, obviously, is, if you've been down there, quite dilapidated, so all that will be, um, repaired and improved. Uh, substantially, we're landscaping around for the, um, the neighborhood residential properties, which there is a few to the south. Other than that, it's not a super complicated process, um, bringing up to the parking standards that are required for facility of, facility of this type, and I don't know what else to add beyond that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments on this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing, case J-21-0112? Saying none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Shall move. Support it.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on case J-21-0012. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve case J-21-0112, special use permit for a marijuana grower/processor establishment at 1400 Atwater with the following three contingencies? Number one, approval by the Engineering Department. Number two, the applicant successfully securing approval by the city clerk for an adult-use marijuana establishment license. And number three, if necessary, approval by the Board of Appeals on zoning for an exception to the 500-foot separation distance from another marijuana establishment.
Shall move, Moore.
Support Nash.
Discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Is this, did we do this the last meeting? Did we review this, or is this a new, the other end of the building? So, we did. I see this going like this, so, okay, so.
It's the other end of the building.
We approved one half already?
A portion of the one half, yes.
And so now we looking at the other half?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the same developers, correct?
Correct.
Different developers.
Huh?
Different developers.
Okay, so, even to developer, I, I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, I need you to come back up here, young man, because I have some questions for you. How many employees are, do you plan on having at this facility?
I think you might be better positioned to answer that question. Probably five full-time employees.
Okay, okay. Your security system, will it be combined with the other establishment, or is it a whole, y'all shaking y'all heads, so I don't know. So, your, so, your whole connection is different?
Yes, they are, just happen to be next to each other, that's the only similarity.
So, it's your friends? Y'all like each other?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, I just had to ask, okay. I'm sorry, I'm a jokester, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
I have a question about parking, specifically, uh, the abandoned CSX Railway. Who owns that property?
Currently, we do, yes.
You own the property?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I couldn't tell. Um, secondly, um, there are adjacent R1 single-family residences. I assume the postcards were sent out? Any response?
Yes. Yes, the cards were sent out within 300 feet, um, and likewise, uh, there's screening being provided between the parking area and those residential areas. There's a five-foot masonry wall as well as some landscaping.
Did any resident respond?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, no, did not have anyone respond.
Well, the concern that was brought up is the fact that at 1460 Atwater, there's also a, uh, special use permit pending, uh, the business license has not been granted yet. So the concern we have to address is the 500-foot distance.
According to the city ordinance, the 500-foot setback would not be set as of yet, however. The other was already approved, so therefore this application and like other instances is going to put a undue hardship onto the other that has been approved. So, they would have to go to the ZBA for approval, like you're stating. So technically, we are within the ordinance.
This is to the attorney.
Uh-huh, so I make sure that was brought up, because we need to, to make sure that's Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll, I'm sorry, um, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostash.
Yes.
Motion was approved.
Thank you. The next item is the public hearing for case J-21-0115, site plan review for a special use permit for marijuana grower/processor establishment at 2125 Marshall Court. Is the applicant or representative present? Please state your name and your address. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Thank you, uh, good evening to the Commission. My name is Maurice Morton, my address is 2915 John, our city of Detroit. And just for, uh, correction on the record, this is for retailer facility, not processor, um, as indicated. Um, doubtful I'll take the full 10 minutes, let me tell you briefly, uh, about what we're proposing. We are proposing a retailer establishment at this location. Um, my name is Maurice Morton, I am an owner in this location along with my partner, Angelo Jayden, who's in the back. Um, we've come to Saginaw, we've looked at various locations, we're also looking to do a grow here in Saginaw soon in the future in order to then become vertical. Uh, our experience is extensive, um, I own three or four dispensaries right now in the city of Detroit. We own one jointly together, Green Farm, which is also in the city of Detroit. I also own Motor City Cush in the city of Detroit, um, as well as Tree Laded Health Center in the city of Detroit, have a grow operation in the city of Flint, as well as a grow operation cultivation in the city of Detroit. One of the things that we feel is unique about our group is this, is about two years ago, probably two or three years ago, and you could probably research it and see, um, our group has always been supportive of social and economic equity. Meaning this, in the city of Detroit, I was the very first to set up a training center for local residents there in the city. We're proposing to do the same here in Saginaw. This training center provides free opportunities, I'm also an attorney by trade, so we also provide free expungements for those who are interested in endeavors in the marijuana or cannabis industry. And the way that works is, is they come in, they receive training, and then we set them up with free apprenticeships at various locations, be grow operations, be it processing, or retailer operations. We are proposing to do that same thing here in the city of Saginaw. We think it's very important that there's diversity in this industry, we also think it's very important that we support the community. One of the also things that we did was we entered into the very first community benefits agreement in the city of Detroit, which has been mirrored and copied for the last few years. And what we did was, after our land use approval, we went into the community, and prior to, we had to have a BZA hearing there, um, we went into the community and we worked out a community benefits agreement. So what we did was we contractually signed an agreement with the community, making us responsible for certain things, whether it was trash pickup, supporting the community, including financial support. Those, we negotiate clearly with the community at that time, and we are also proposing to do that here. And finally, another component to our proposal is, uh, we always guarantee no less than 50% employment or hiring from within the community. We expect at this facility that we will have anywhere from 10 to 20 regular employees, that does not include security that we may hire and, uh, contract with, but we would look for a local security company to contract with. And then also, you know, beyond, as we move forward, to look at cultivation and, uh, processing in the future here, we'll also make those same promises and guarantees which we will put in writing. What I ask is that the Commission rely on the exhibits that have been submitted, all our security plans, which are quite extensive, are in there, the site plans that are quite extensive, we're proposing beautification of the area. The facility has been closed almost a year now, I think it's been nine months. Uh, we're acquiring this facility, we are also acquiring the back parking lot behind the facility, which we entered into an agreement with the church that owned the lot, um, so we'll have extensive proper, I mean, parking there on-site. We think that this, we understand that there's another facility in the area, uh, we think competition should be welcomed, right? You know, I think in the area, there's a family dollar and a Dollar Tree right next to each other. I don't think anyone should be afraid of the competition. We think we'll be great community partners, we think we'll be a great asset to the community. I thank the Commission for their time and for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this case? Please come to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes.
My name is Scott Burnett, I.
I'm sorry, and give your address.
3204 West Stanley, Mount Morris, Michigan. I am from, I'm representing Loom Cannabis Company, I am the general manager of the facility that is located on 3446 State Street. Um, Loom and its team of lawyers oppose this application and wish you to uphold the ordinance and deny the request based that it is less than 500 feet from Loom Cannabis Company on 3446 State Street. To quote, "The following minimum distancing regulations shall apply to all marijuana establishments. Marijuana establishments should not be located within 500 feet of another marijuana establishment as stated in section 153.611, Authorized Marijuana Establishment, Section G." We hope that the city will protect our $2 million investment by upholding the rules and the ordinances and what it was designed for. By allowing their variance, you will be creating an unhealthy saturated market that will prove to be negative in the long run for the city of Saginaw. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this case? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this case?
Madam Chair, I have a letter, um, from Anthony Denna. He's a, uh, my name is Anthony Denna, property owner and business owner in the city of Saginaw. For 40-plus years, I'm writing the Planning Commission Board related, relating to an application who is seeking special use permit to allow for the use of 2125 Marshall Court as a recreational marijuana retail establishment. My hope and request are that the Planning Commission uphold the ordinance and deny this request based on the fact that it is less than 500 feet from 3446 State Street, or State, yeah, State Street Saginaw site, which is operated by Loomis, or Loom Cannabis. The following minimum distance regulations shall apply to all marijuana establishments. Marijuana establishments will not be located within 500 feet of another marijuana establishment location as stated in section 153.611, Authorized Marijuana Establishment, Section G. By allowing this variance, you will be creating hardship to Loom Cannabis. Loom has spent $2 million to get to the point where they are at today, coupled with my investment into this property. I am hoping the city will protect that investment by upholding the rules of the ordinance and what it was designed for. By allowing this variance, you will be creating an unhealthy, oversaturated market that will prove to be negative in the long run for the city of Saginaw. Appreciate your time and consideration in this matter. Anthony Denna, 3430 State, Suite 2, Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Yeah, my name's Don Moffett, my address is 3190 Sherwood, Saginaw, Michigan, in the township. Um, I have some prejudice in this case. I have the building for sale for my sellers out of Lansing. I know the ordinance is 500-some feet as the crow flies, but if you physically measured the distance from that building to the other building on court, it's 646 feet, front doorstep to front doorstep, if you measured with a measuring stick. Also, I'd like to point out that there's a liquor store 10 feet from the bar on the corner, from the bar on that corner is another 100 feet to another bar, another 200 feet from that is another bar. So it seems to be okay to put bars and things close to each other, and I certainly understand the other party's concern. But if you take the crow fly out of there and you measure it, it's over 645 feet. And should they even use their other entrance for that building, would probably add another 100 feet to that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this public hearing? Yes.
Can I make one more?
No, sorry. Anyone else wish to speak on this public hearing? Saying none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Shall move, Moore.
Support Jones.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye. Aye. You got it, slick.
All opposed.
Didn't want to come out.
Abstentions? The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve case J-21-0115, site plan review for a special use permit for a marijuana retail establishment at 2125 Marshall Court with the following three contingencies? Approval by the Board of Appeals on zoning for an exception to the 500-foot separation distance from another marijuana establishment. Two, approval by the Engineering Department for all utility connections, stormwater capture and release, and proper parking lot grading and flow. And number three, successfully securing approval by the city clerk for an adult-use marijuana Is there a motion?
Shall move.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to approve this site plan review. Discussion?
Bob, I have a question. When these individuals started working on this project, were they told that they were close, and I've heard what the young man said in the back, he said that the feet was more than the 500. Did anybody know that, did anybody measure it out, how are we doing this?
So, according to the ordinance, you have to measure from the closest point of the building to the closest point of the property line of the sensitive use, and that's less than 500 feet. And yes, I did inform him several times.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I actually had a question for staff, just to confirm. Was the application for a retail establishment?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, so our communication.
The communication does say retail. Retail establishment at 2125 Court, Marshall Court.
Look on the.
Sorry, the, under request.
Yes, the request line.
It refers to our processor, so I just wanted.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
First page.
Other places, it does say retail, though.
Yeah, first page on the quest. Because I read everything.
Just wanted to clear.
Thank you.
Set up for the record where those, there was.
Any other questions on the Commission?
Thank you.
Yes?
Um, just to address some of the public comment that was made in regards to the liquor stores that are in the area, our ordinance does not state or does not have any setbacks to liquor stores. As a matter of fact, liquor stores and liquor licenses are controlled by the state, not the city of Saginaw. But our ordinance does contain, does have a condition in there for setbacks for marijuana establishments that are within the 500-foot setback. And in this particular case, this building is, because Loom Cannabis is, now has their business license in the city of Saginaw, so that does firmly set a setback within this And my last comment, Madam Chair, is that I, I do not recommend that we send this or approve this or give this to the Zoning Board of Appeals, because then we'd be going, um, we would not uphold the ordinance that the city council has put in place for marijuana establishments.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission?
We haven't, we haven't faced this exact situation before, have we? Where we have a licensed entity operating and someone else wants to open something within 500 feet.
That is correct, because right, right now, to my knowledge, we have three licensed facilities in the city, so we have Loom Cannabis on, uh, Devonport, uh, we have Premier over on Janes and Genesee, and Skymant is going to be opening on 700 Greshit.
Skymant is open.
Yeah, they will be opening this Friday.
No, they are open.
They're open, yeah. They're having a grand opening this Friday.
Okay, well, I happen to.
But just corrected, for the record, they are open currently, so those three, yeah.
Any other comments or questions on the Commission?
Just a reminder that as you vote, if you're voting in opposition, you do need to state the basis for that, and that basis should follow the criteria that are set forth in the ordinance for. the ordinance for special use consideration.
Okay.
Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Dallas.
No, because this is within the 500-foot, or 500-foot distance between marijuana establishments.
Commissioner Hanley.
No, same reasons, within the 500 feet.
Commissioner Jones.
No, for the same reason, is within the 500 feet.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
No, same reason, within the 500 feet.
Commissioner Ossash.
No, because it's within the 500-foot setback.
Motion was denied.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Case J22-0117 Petition to Abandon Streets Within the CSX Transportation Switch Yard.
Not you yet.
Is the applicant or representative present?
This one will be quick.
No, they, they were not able to make the meeting. What they are trying to do, they've made to me that they're trying to just clean up their property. Technically, there are no right-of-ways in there other than potentially utility right-of-ways. We're still doing some research within the records. There's a possibility that during the fire, those got destroyed, but there is no record of that, so we're still searching that out. But we still need to hold the public hearing regarding this abandonment so that we can formally have those, those right-of-ways closed.
Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this public hearing, on this particular Anyone from the public wish to speak on Case J22-0117? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Case J22-0117? A Petition to Abandon Streets Within the CSX Transportation Switch Yard. This means that the recommendation will go to city council to change the city map to reflect the proposed right-of-way abandonment.
Move to approve.
Support Jones.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the case. Any discussion?
I have a question for staff. City staff?
Yes.
So these streets are basically, nobody's been using them for years, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nobody even knows they're-.
The only, the only underground utility that we are aware of is along, is under 8th Street.
8th Street?
Yep.
Okay.
So far.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were told once before when this came to find city council that the road commission would not allow closing the streets.
That's, well.
Is this in the so-called Green Northeast District?
The county road commission wouldn't, if these are city streets, the county road commission wouldn't have authority over them.
Any other comments or questions on the commission? Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ossash.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The next item is the public hearing for Case J22-0118 Site Plan Review for a Special Use Permit for Marijuana Grower Processor Establishment at 1716 South Jefferson. Is the applicant or representative present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Andy Andre from Avanti Development Group, 330 Enterprise Court, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48302. The, as you mentioned, the property, 1716 South Jefferson. The current zoning is an M1 zoning, and so it's an approved use within the zoning district. It's part of the plans that we submitted. We included the buffer plans, and we meet those requirements. When you look at the site, there's a one, there's one access point. There's an, there's two buildings that utilize the same access point, and both parking come off of that. We've supplied Mr. Ghaleen a cross-access agreement between the two parties to maintain that driveway, and so that, so that we can, we can clear up any issues there. So that'll, that'll be, we'll utilize that same drive for both businesses that are occurring there. In order to meet the parking requirements, we did expand a little bit of the parking on the site. We're capable of doing that. We have a total of 20 spaces, and as a result, we're meeting the stormwater management requirements of the city. We are doing some underground detention and then restricted release out to Jefferson. As part of the, the site improvements, we're looking at, there's some existing lighting that's out there. We'll be improving that to LED, all LED lighting along the building. We will be putting in some additional site lighting as well. Landscaping improvements throughout the, the parking area that we're going to be expanding. We're going to be also be doing improvements to the building itself. There's some areas of the building that need to be enclosed, some overhead doors and that, so those will be removed. They'll be blocked in and to match the existing building, and the entire building will be painted as well. When we're looking at, when we're looking at some of the systems inside the building, even though it's not part of the requirement, I think it's worthy of mentioning, we are looking at the design of the mechanical systems to make sure that we're taking care of the, of any potential odor issues. Activated carbon systems will be installed in every one of the locations where there'll be any type of, any type of cannabis-related activity. We will also design the system with a negative pressure within the rooms. Planning Commission may remember, I've been here a couple different times, we have submitted building plans to, on a different location, and we did design that with a negative pressure so that we can accomplish that. We submit very detailed balancing requirements that go along with that. So again, we've talked with the applicant on that and fully aware of that, so we will incorporate that as part of it. As far as when we look at the employment, the, the building's just over about 9,000 square feet. We're looking at four full-time employees and then eight part-time employees periodic through, throughout the month. One of the ways that we had spoken with the applicant, the applicant is here as well, so if there's any questions that come up, I'm sure they could be able to answer, but, you know, I was curious about how do you, how are they going to go about hiring practices? And what they expressed to me is they've had success at other facilities with, with community pages, marketplace sites, those are different things that are targeted specifically for the area, for the community. They will be doing that same thing. They've had, as mentioned, they had success. They feel that they'll have success here as well with the staffing. And during construction, you know, one of the, one of the things is that's a significant investment as well, and they're going to be looking for local contractors, specifically with the framing, the plumbing, and the, the electricians as well. And electrician is a, and plumbing are two major components to this, so those are going to be, look to be local contractors as well. So, Madam Chair, we, we feel that we, the plans that we put in front of you and the applications that have been provided meet the requirements, and we'll be asking for that approval tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this case?
I have a letter. This is from Reverend Robert Gross, Bishop of Saginaw. I received a postcard in the mail regarding a public hearing taking place on Tuesday, January 25th, for a site plan and special use permit application to allow a recreational marijuana grow establishment business at 1716 South Jefferson. Since I'm unable to attend the public hearing, I'm sharing my comments in this letter. To begin, I strongly oppose a marijuana business in this community, especially in the neighborhood being proposed. I live not too far from this proposed location, a lower-income area of the city of Saginaw. Not to mention, do we really want or need establishment like this in such close proximity to Saginaw Children's Zoo? As Bishop of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Saginaw, I could not in good conscience support this proposal. I also believe that another marijuana business is not good for our community. The impact upon this community would provide no positive benefit to our local community. Many studies show the harmful effects of recreational marijuana on adults and young people in the communities where recreational marijuana has been legal for some time. I'd also ask that the Saginaw Planning Commission think twice about granting a special use permit for this business, especially because of the area in which it is to be located. And that's signed, as I mentioned, Robert, Reverend Robert Gross, Bishop of Saginaw.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this public hearing? Anyone else wish to speak on this public hearing? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to close this public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Case J22-0018 Site Plan Review for a Special Use Permit for Marijuana Grower Processor Establishment at 1716 South Jefferson with the following two contingencies? Number one, approval by the Engineering Department, and number two, successfully securing approval by the city clerk for an adult-use marijuana establishment license?
Some move.
Some move.
Support.
It has been moved and seconded to approve this case. Any discussions?
Just a comment.
Uh huh.
Just a comment for the letter that was sent in to Bob. And I understand some of the concerns sometimes with the community, and I do hear this while I'm out and about. We've had a lot of applications that have come in. Be interesting to see how many of the provisioning licenses did fail or expire. So I know always it looks like a lot that's coming into the city, but also, too, it was well-known that when city council was developing this ordinance for a year, we really didn't have a lot of people come and, and talk to us about it. So that is my comment.
Thank you.
Can I do it? Can I ask one question? Staff, what, what was this building before?
Staff?
I thought you were the local historian.
I can, I can probably lend a little bit to that. It's, it's currently occupied. It's, it's kind of a fabrication shop.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Yes.
Commissioner Ossash.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for Case J22-0119 Special Use Permit for Marijuana Retail Establishment at 3307 Davenport Avenue. Is the applicant or representative present? Please state your name and address. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
John Mori with DNMSite in Carlton. I'm bringing this site at 3307 Davenport back in front of you. This is for a transfer of the special use permit from Great Lakes Natural Remedies to BTD Holdings. The site is 3307 Davenport. It's already been approved once through the Engineering Department and through the commission. It's the previous, it's the Stans locksmith site on Davenport. It's a thousand-foot, square-foot building. We've meet, we've met all the requirements for the setbacks, and I don't know if I need to go through all the engineering data with you guys again. You probably all remember it, I think. But we are, one of the things we are doing on this site is removing the two curb cuts on Davenport, and so the access will be off of Morrison. They do have an easement into the hotel that's there right now, the Davenport Inn. So MDOT always likes it when we, when we remove curb cuts. There's eight parking spots provided, and then we're meeting all the stormwater requirements again. Like I said, this has already been approved from the Engineering Department, and this is a transfer of the special use permit.
Thank you. Anyone here would like to comment on this case? Anyone here who would like to comment on this case?
I received a letter from Ms. Harris opposing the recreational marijuana retail establishment business at 3307 Davenport, Saginaw, Michigan. This is regarding the recreational marijuana establishment business at 3307 Davenport. I live right off of Davenport in the residential neighborhood of the city of Saginaw. The city of Saginaw has already allowed a recreational marijuana establishment business named Loom Cannabis at 3446 State Street. If this permit request is approved, there will be a marijuana retail on each corner of our residential neighborhood. Please do not allow people from other neighborhoods put what they want in our community just to make a profit. We are taxpayers in the amount of $2,000 a year plus rubbish fees of $230. If you allow this establishment to be approved at 3307 Davenport, this would be there, this would be, there will be two marijuana businesses on each corner of residential. The city of Saginaw needs to start thinking about people who live in the neighborhood and out safety. My young daughter and myself are fearful even to walk the State Street Plaza because of all the drug use going on there, on near the building. Truly, you are as fearful and very concerned resident as Harris, 22225 North Morrison,
Thank you.
Was the first name provided?
Uh, just a J, J Harris.
Anyone else wish to comment on this case? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Commissioners, is there a motion to approve Case J22-0119 Special Use Permit for Marijuana Retail Establishment at 3307 Davenport, pending the applicant successfully securing a business license to operate by the city clerk and the state for an adult-use marijuana establishment license?
Some move.
Support.
Support. It's been moved and seconded to, seconded to approve this special use permit. Any questions, discussions? Yes, ma'am.
This is for Bob. Didn't we just disapprove another group that was around or some feet from this stands to Loom? I think we had this discussion before about how close everybody was.
500, they're more than 500 feet away from Loom.
It's a five, yeah, it's a 500 feet.
I'm listening.
Yeah, because the one on Marshall Court was within.
I know they're kind of in that same area, but that was not within the setback.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I'm glad we brought that up, too, because Loom had expressed that concern.
Had expressed what, because they're-.
The closest of the business, but they are within the setback. They're, they're, they meet setback requirements.
And basically, this one is already approved before. It's just a change of-.
Yeah. What's different now, Commissioner, is that, for the record, too, that Loom is now an established.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which wasn't in the previous.
Any other questions or comments? Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Dallas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Commissioner Osash?
Yes.
Motion was approved.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the consideration of a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to change the parking standards within the riverfront mixed-use, downtown, and oldtown subzones. I'm assuming this came from Staff Golin, and so would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. What prompted this is some inquiries from individuals who want to change the existing use of a building, and anytime you have a changing use or there is a new development within an area, that triggers the requirements to conform to the parking standards, okay? As stated in the report, within the downtown and oldtown areas, it may often be impractical to provide parking because of the way the building's envelope encompasses the entire property. So therefore, they would have to look elsewhere and a different site. This is especially true in these historic areas. So the proposed change doesn't necessarily eliminate the need for a developer or an individual coming to the planning commission with a change of use for a new development. What it does is it simply changes the standards within those two subzone areas. The developer's self-interest oftentimes, to attract customers, wants to provide parking, but parking may not be possible in some of those situations. So it's in their best interest to put parking in. The change is that we're proposing that the planning commission could reduce with just, within those two districts, up to 100% of the parking standard if the project meets the following requirements: They are at least 500 feet away from a public parking area. They are within 300 feet of perhaps a shared parking arrangement with another business. There are other issues where we can reduce the number of parking, for example, with providing bicycle parking and whatnot. But they would still, or they could provide some sort of documentation that would indicate that they don't necessarily need that much parking because of the type of use. But that would be presented to the planning commission, and that would be your decision to approve or deny that. Just kind of background, we had the parking study done for the master plan. So within the downtown area, for example, when they did the survey, on-street parking at the highest point was 17%. Within public parking lots, the high point was 50%, and that was primarily concentrated within the SVRC area. And then the comments said this parking district should be monitored, and if the demand increases to include more segments at 100% occupancy, either on-street paid parking system maybe could be introduced, or an additional parking may be needed through public park facilities. Within the oldtown area, the conclusion was the same. Occupancy on on-street parking at its high point was 30%, and the occupancy in public parking lots at, was the high point, was at 70%, and that was primarily in the Ipple And then there was also a market analysis that was done in 2018 by Hassil Levine, I think, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly, Associates of the Downtown and Oldtown Marketplace. And it concluded that while certain locations may experience parking issues at peak times during the day, the study area as a whole does not appear to be lacking parking where this environment does not exist. There is almost always a perceived parking issue. The issue is often further compounded by employees parking in spots close to businesses where they work.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here wish to comment on this case? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, commissioners and city staff. My name is Abraham Allen. I resident at 1585 Latrop, Saginaw Township, and I also own property at 234 South Water Street along the river. So my question, I guess I have a question concerning the parking, the existing parking that businesses have now, will it be in a change to the requirement? So I have property and I have parking along the riverfront on Water Street, so I don't know that it's just gonna be something I should be concerned about, the existing parking I have, or will it eliminate parking on the street? So will the change consist of any of that?
Thank you. We will address that. Thank you. No comment on that. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this public hearing? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Yeah. How you doing? My name's Jeremiah Gallardo, owner of 218 South Hamilton. My question is about the parking is, well, it's really not a question. What I would say is, what I would propose the city should do is actually put parking meters down there. It's too much combustion with vehicles coming by. So many clients of mine lost mirrors. There's cameras there to get the camera view for the police. They tell you to go to the city, city tells you to go to the police, police tells you to go to the city, city tells you to go nowhere. So that's the problem, what I'm having. Plenty, over 10 years, I probably had 20 customers lose mirrors from cars speeding up and down, businesses-wise, business trucks. And then you try to help your customer out, and you try to send them somewhere to figure out where these problems are coming from, and nobody tells you something. So if you have some type of ordinance that come down there where cars are just zooming by, there's really no police situating down there. The young, young black lady that does the parking tickets down there, she's, I'm always waving to her to get people because they don't care. And there's accidents down there on the corner of Cass Street all the time. I'm just asking you, what are you guys gonna do? Because the parking down there, there's plenty of parking down there. It's just people park hours upon hours upon hours. And then some people just, that I know who work there and have businesses there, they park the cars in the front lanes so no customers or people that want to come in to park lunchtime, etc., don't have no access because everybody who works there are taking all the spots. Now, if you put...
Three minutes.
Thank you for time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
I did receive an email. This is from Reverend Kurt Norman from St. John's Episcopal Church, 123 North Michigan Avenue. Good morning, thank you for this. I think what's being proposed is a good idea. I'm sure this was some of the church boards who feel the same way. When I first read the postcard, I was thinking it might have had more or less to do with development and more with current parking standards along the streets, etc. I realized the county owns the lot next to St. John's, but it seems fewer people park there since they removed the coin meters and installed gates controlled by electronic payment. It's way out of my league, but I'm not sure how much revenue is generated by way of parking. I tend to think that making parking as user-friendly as possible will benefit the business and churches in oldtown, if not downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this case? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
It's a move.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the consideration of a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to change the parking standards within the riverfront mixed-use downtown and oldtown subzones? This means that the recommendation will go to city council for final approval and adoption. Is there a motion?
It's a move.
Support.
Has been moved and seconded to approve this consideration. Any discussion or comments from the commission?
I have a question. Please explain this to me again, because I got lost. So is it better, is it making stuff available to park? I know that it's real congested on Hamilton Street and up and down that area. It's also, you know, congested in back of, and even around SBIC, so say again. Bob, I'm sorry.
Well, first, it does not change any of the existing parking. This has to do with new developments or changes of use in buildings within the downtown and oldtown area. We have parking standards, just like we review with the marijuana establishments. They have to have so many parking spaces for their particular type of use. Same holds true within the retail and office types of businesses that would normally be in those areas. And so therefore, this provides an opportunity for the planning commission to grant up to 100% of the, what do I want to say that?
Future developments.
Well, you can, you can abate the need for parking up to 100% for a particular development if they meet certain standards. And one is that they're within 500 feet of a public parking area, within 300 feet of a shared parking arrangement that they may have with another business, on-street parking, and then any reports that the developer or owner might provide to you that would justify not having as much parking as the standard requires.
So in summary, it's gonna add more parking space? That's what I really want. That's what I'm listening to.
It's not really going to add.
So it's not gonna make a difference either way.
So for an example, with the Huntington project that came forward, that they are putting in those apartments, they have to have so many parking spaces. They would potentially not be required to have as many. At this point, we can cut it down to 50% of their, they were at 250 or so.
Well, they have to have 200, or two spaces per unit, and they're proposing 119 units, so they would...
200 and...
Yeah, whatever.
38.
Thank you.
So right now, we could cut that down.
Which we did. We cut it down to 50% because they are providing parking in the parking garage on-street and then this proposed parking on-street, or surface parking lot. With this new ordinance, they would not be required if the planning commission decided that parking wouldn't be required. As I mentioned earlier, though, it's in the best interest of the developer to have parking for their customers, especially if they're leasing space on a, for residential purposes. So, you know, it's kind of making it a market-driven kind of a thing, but with your blessing.
Well, and especially when you look at buildings, like when we have new businesses coming into areas in oldtown, for example, where all of the buildings, Bob had mentioned, in many of these areas, the building takes up their entire lot. They don't have space for parking. So we're really having to let them not have parking anyways because their customers park in the Ipple parking lot or the other parking lot. So now it's just actually allowed in the ordinance if we were to approve this.
So this really isn't about creating new parking spaces so much as it's allowing developers potential alternatives to on-site parking.
Right. So the assumption would be they would have proximity to a public parking lot or a shared parking lot. Right. So that's the 500 feet, 300 feet.
So Mr. Allen's not gonna be affected by this?
No, he won't be affected by this. However, I can say that if we get to the point where parking becomes an issue again, which would be a good problem in the downtown and oldtown areas, then we might consider putting in metered spots or developing more public parking areas.
Which would address the gentleman's comment back there. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Yes.
Bob, thanks for bringing up the parking study, because I did, and it was interesting to see the downtown and utilization, what's not. But you were right about oldtown. But what I'm hearing here is this takes the burden off the developer.
Yes.
And it makes it better for them, because I have had developers talk about that, and Cassie, you're 100% right. That becomes a concern. So I'm happy to hear this. So, thank you.
You know, it may not necessarily be an issue in downtown because we have a lot of infill areas that we could potentially be used for parking.
Yeah.
In oldtown is another story. There is limited space there for...
And that's who I hear it from. Folks trying to do projects.
And I don't think those buildings were built for cars.
They were not built for cars.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none. Staff Zimmerman, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Dallas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Yes.
Commissioner Osash?
Yes.
Motion was approved.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is, ooh, election of officers. Yes, ma'am?
I make a motion that we remain with Ms. Dallas as our chairperson.
Yes. Bob is the vice chair, Brayley is the secretary. And at this point, just so you know, he is in the process of reappointment, so he will be coming back.
Could I change what you said? Or you gotta change what you said?
You can change it if you want.
I would propose we leave the slate the same as it is now.
Do I have to go the next step? All in favor?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's technically a motion to amend the main motion. So we have two motions to vote on. First, the motion to amend.
Yes. Is there, all in favor of the amendment to the main motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, I need to restate the main motion with the amendment. Can you repeat that back to me, Staff Zimmerman? Because I was...
I nominated you.
I know, and with the amendment, I need the amendment...
Commissioner Nash made a motion to elect the same slate as we currently have that in 2020.
And your original motion was...
No, I thought we were doing, I thought we were doing it individually.
Yes. And so that was, that was the amendment. So we amended the motion. So now the amendment, or the motion is to nominate Dallas with the amendment. And actually, the amendment should cancel out the main motion. Is that correct?
What it effectively does is you're still nominated for chair, but it includes the other...
Includes the other staff, the other officers. All right. Thank you. So the motion now is to renominate the current existing officers. All in favor? I'm sorry, do we need to take a...
No, you can just say all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Well, I mean, ask no questions.
Um...
Okay.
She's just messing with me. I got it.
As we go into the next part, I have these for you to sign. This one's from last time, so actually, all of you need to sign that anyway.
Thank you.
You said it last time, so I wasn't here when I signed it.
Oh, you were, because you knew I was. Okay, skip that one. Sorry.
It's a tight one.
We have the other one.
The next item on our agenda is old business, which is the master plan status update.
The only update I have is that the... The only update I have is that the Parks and Recreation Plan was by resolution by the city council last evening. And so therefore, we're going to get heavily involved in the draft of the master plan. We are told that by February 11th, from our consultants, that we will have a draft, staff will review that and provide you copies as well for comment. And then we're talking about a public hearing, right?
Following that, I think we were going to go through step by step if we wanted a couple of people, for example, potentially our committee that was working on the surveys, to go through it step by step, make sure we included everything that we were, that we have discussed. And yes, and we were talking about having a special meeting because we get quite a few applications, rather than having potentially another half an hour to an hour discussion. It might be nice to have a special meeting. We'll see when it shakes out, possibly early April, but we'll let you know.
Okay.
Maybe March, April, something like that.
Thank you.
And then we'll have to go through the public hearing process.
I would just like to bring to the record that the city council last evening approved the appointment of, excuse me, the reappointment of James Nightingale and Robert Hanley to the planning commission. Both terms will expire December 31st, 2024. Thank you for your willingness to serve the city. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning the meeting at 7:13? Any opposed? Extentions? Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.